I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The planning board members that are here today are David Rosehacker, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Christine Carnes, our Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor from the City Law Department, and Lisa Agins is our Recording Secretary. Our rules are, our procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, just right over here. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or have been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And we have three changes to our agenda today. Number six, Agenda Item Number Six will be added as a layover on the consent agenda. Agenda Item Number Thirteen will change from approval to a layover. And Number Twenty Eight, Agenda Item Number Twenty Eight has been withdrawn. All right, I will start with the consent cases. Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-3-19-114. Applicant: City Planning on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request approval of the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvements Program. Location: Omaha and the Three Mile Extraterritorial Zoning Jurisdiction. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C... Did I miss eight?
Yes.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C-3-19-137. Applicant: John Folsom. It is on for layover. The request: Approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from industrial to low-density residential. Location: Northwest of 120th Street and Rainwood Road. This is on for layover. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-18-247. C-12-18-248. Applicant: Blondo 180 LLC. This is on for layover. Request: Revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of Blue Stem Meadows. Lots 1 through 109, Outlots A through G. A subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, and MU. The location: Northwest of 180th and Blondo Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Moving on, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-19-120. C-12-19-121. Applicant: RLR Investments LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of R&amp;L Carriers Edition, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to GI. Location: Northeast of 117th and State Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed?
You want to speak?
You want to speak? Okay, it will be removed, and it'll appear, it'll be taken in its regular agenda spot. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-19-135. C-12-19-122. Applicant: Michael Walker. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Lone Pine Subdivision. A subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage along with rezoning from DR and CC to DR and CC. Property is located within an ED Environmental Resources Overlay District, a Flood Fringe Overlay District, and a Flood Way Overlay District. Location: 14445 North River Drive. This is on for layover. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-12-19-123. Applicant: Woodsonia 204 Center LLC. It is on for approval. Excuse me. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of West Center Village Replat 2, a minor plat outside the city limits. Location: Northeast of 203rd and Vinton Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent? Seeing none. Move on. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-3-19-136. C-12-19-125. Applicant is John Folsom. This is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Wounded Warriors Family Support Dunham Edition, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R4 along with a request for a variance to the present development zone, boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. Location: Northwest of 120th Street and Rainwood Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-12-10-38. Applicant: Jason Lafayette. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks for Smoky Ridge. Location: Northeast of 72nd Street and Northern Hills Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-10-19-129. Applicant: Chris Horstman. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of rezoning from GO to CC along with approval of the ACI III Overlay District. Location: 10810 Harney Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-10-19-130. Applicant: Niraj Aguar. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI Overlay District. Location: 1901 Howard Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Sir, were you just a wave? Okay, that's all right. Yeah, you had an auction and bidding. Okay, seeing none. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Twenty One, Case C-10-19-131. Applicant: Ted Grace. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of rezoning from MU to GI. Property is located within a Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location: 3735 South 149th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, it will be removed. That's Agenda Item Number Twenty One. Agenda Item Number Twenty Two is Case C-10-96-261. Applicant: Ted Grace. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for Altech Business Park. Location: Northwest of 144th and F Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty Three, Case C-10-7-4. Applicant: Susan Bishop. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for Midtown Crossing at Turner Park. Location: East of 33rd and Foreigner Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay.
Not this one, but Number Fifteen, we'd like to have that removed.
Okay, you want to, not, not this one, this is, you're fine with this, but go back to Agenda Item Number Fifteen. That is on for layover, and you want to have that removed? Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twenty Four, Case C-10-19-138. Applicant: Robert Greenhagen. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of rezoning from R7 to CC with an MCC overlay. Location: 9006 Ohio Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty Five, Case C-8-19-106. C-8-19-111. Applicant: Michael Walker. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow development within the ED Environmental Resources Overlay District, and a special use permit to allow a campground in the DR District. A portion of the property is located in the Flood Fringe and Flood Way Overlay Districts. Location: 14445 North River Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do?
I'm not sure exactly what we would be definitely opposed to it.
If you want to come up and speak and give your testimony, then you would have to have it removed. Otherwise, it is on for layover, there would be another day for that to take place, but if you choose to speak today, we can take it off a consent.
I want it removed, and if I could speak today, I'll speak today.
Okay.
We'll call those two together.
All right. So Twenty Five will be removed. Agenda Item Number Twenty Six, Case C-8-19-126. Applicant: Sandra Delgado. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare services general in the R4 District. Location: 5815 and 5819 South 14th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty Seven, Case C-8-19-127. Applicant: Todd Kenny. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED Northern Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location: 10409 North 72nd Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty Eight, Case... Oh, that's right, that was withdrawn. Agenda Item Number Twenty Nine, Case C-14-19-132. Applicant: Adjacent Property Owners. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the 67th Street right-of-way between Lot 24, Block 14 of West Albright Edition, Southern Lot of 3802 South 67th Street, and Lot 15, Block 13 of West Albright Edition, 3701 South 67th Street, and East-West Alley portions separating the northern and southern portions of Lot 24, Block 14 of West Albright Edition. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirty, Case C-14-19-133. Planning Board is the applicant. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the east eighteen feet of the north 49th Street right-of-way south of Saddle Creek Road, abutting Lot 12, Block 11, Cloverdale Edition, and the previously vacated alley adjacent to Lot 12. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. And finally, Agenda Item Number Thirty One, Case C-14-19-134. Applicant: Adjacent Property Owners. It is on for approval. The request: Vacation of the east-west alley east of North 36th Street and south of Evans Street, abutting Malcolm X Memorial Site, 3448 and 3525 Evans Street, abutting Lots 6 and 12, Block 4 of Bedford Place Edition. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. From the board, do we have a motion on the consent items for approval?
Hope I got this right. I'm moved for approval of Agenda Items Sixteen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-seven, Twenty-nine, Thirty, and Thirty-one.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes, but I recuse myself on Item Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, five to zero. Four to zero.
Do we have a motion on the consent for layover?
Motion to layover.
Cases Six, Eight, Thirteen, Seventeen, Twenty-two, and Twenty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, those cases that remained on consent are done for the day, no further action will be taken on those cases. If you remove the case from the consent, you'll have the opportunity, when it comes up on the regular agenda, to give your testimony. But if you're here for one of those cases, they've been decided and acted on today, so... The first case is Agenda Item Number One, and it's administrative only, meaning there will be no opportunity for public testimony. That is Agenda Item Number One, Case C-10-19-39. Applicant: Aldridge Holdings LLC. Request: Final plat approval of Old Town Commons, lots 1 through 5, outlots A and B, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from DR and R4 to MU. Location: Southwest of 204th Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Eric, may we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so preliminary plat of Old Town Commons was recommended for approval by Planning Board on March 6 of this year, and recommended for, approved by City Council on April 9, 2019. The final plat is for five lots, zoned mixed-use along with two outlots. It's very similar in compliance with the approved preliminary plat. There are a few small items that remain to be worked out among those final acceptable mixed-use plans and final acceptable subdivision agreement. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from DR and R4 to MU, subject to some middle of an acceptable final mixed-use development plan, and approval of the final plat, subject to meeting the three conditions listed in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'm moved approval of the rezoning from DR to R4 to MU, subject to some middle of an acceptable final mixed-use development plan, and approval of the final plat, subject to meeting the three conditions outlined in the department's recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. We're going to take Agenda Items Number Two and Three together. Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-19-76. Applicant: Pacific 90 LLC. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Pacific Grove, formerly Pacific Hill, a subdivision located inside the city limits with a waiver to Section 5384A lot depth along with rezoning from R2 to DR and R4. This was laid over from our May meeting. Location: 1018 South 90th Street. And we'll take Number Three along with it. Case C-11-19-83. Pacific 90 LLC is the applicant. Request: Approval of the PUR Plan Unit redevelopment. This was laid over also from our May meeting. Location: 1018 South 90th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, representing the applicant, Pacific 90 LLC. The current property that we are discussing today, this is Pacific Street and 90th running north. We are just to the northwest of that intersection. It's 1018 90th Street. The property is 1.3 acres. It is currently zoned R2. To the northwest and east of the property, those lots and properties are, have an R2 zoning as well. And then to the south, there is an R4 zoning that has three multifamily buildings currently on it. We are looking for the R4 zoning with a PUR overlay for the 1018 90th Street address. The lot, let's see here, there's a little bit more of a close-up to it. The aerial shows a home on this lot. It's an older aerial, it's not up to date. That lot, or that home currently has been demoed, and it is a vacant lot. The goal of this project is to create some density and create a unique project and neighborhood to live in. The project will include seven separate homes. As you can see, there's some elevations of what those proposed homes will look like. The lots on the west side of the property are generally 50 by 130 feet deep. The lots on the east side are generally 50 feet by 105, but then they have an additional 45-foot buffer between the back of the lot and 90th Street. The price point for these homes will be between the $600 and $800,000 range. Some of them will include nice many's and elevators is an option to meet that market demand. The site will have a one-way private drive going through the site. You'll enter to the north, and egress on the south. That private drive will be lined with landscaping and be anchored on both ends with stamps and colored concrete. They're also, include a community space within the project. That will include some benches, maybe a fire pit, create a nice gathering area, and have a kind of courtyard feel for the project as a whole. There will be some internal sidewalks in the project connecting down to 90th Street. One of the comments in the ref report was looking for connection on the north with a sidewalk as well along this lot. and colored concrete. Um, there also include a community space, uh, within the project. Um, that will include some benches, maybe a fire pit, um, create a nice gathering area and have a kind of courtyard feel for the project as a whole. Um, there will be some internal sidewalks in the project connecting down to Ninetieth Street. Uh, one of the comments in the ref report was looking for, uh, connection on the north with a sidewalk as well along this lot. Um, we had originally shown a sidewalk on that side, um, uh, but we had it removed as a request from, uh, one of the neighbors to the north, uh, trying to limit, uh, traffic, pedestrian or, um, pedestrian traffic on that north side as well. Um, so we feel with, um, the connection through the middle of the project into the south, that that will provide, uh, enough pedestrian access as needed for the project. On the east side of the project, uh, there'll be a well landscaped, um, rain garden between the back of lots and Ninetieth Street. Um, it'll have, um, on the back of those lots will also include a, um, a masonry pillared fence, uh, with, um, with metal, metal rails, um, similar to what is, is shown here. Um, these lots and their, and the landscaping for the project, um, will be maintained through the HOA to ensure a consistent look and consistent maintenance. The developers have already contracted with a local, um, landscape company to, uh, do the installation for those projects. Um, I believe this project will have a similar feel to some of the other denser projects in the area and relate to Pacific Street, or relate to Ninetieth Street, uh, in the same way that, that those do. We had a neighborhood meeting at, uh, Sorenson Library on April thirtieth. Uh, we had approximately ten neighbors, uh, were in attendance that night, uh, to learn about the project and express some of their concerns. Since that meeting, there has been, uh, additional phone calls and emails, um, shared as well. Uh, the main concern for the neighbors were screening and changes to the slope and grading on the western property line. Uh, to address these screening concerns, um, we are proposing a six-foot vinyl fence, um, that will run the length of the whole property on the west. Um, on the south side of the property, that vinyl fence will run to the eastern edge of the private drive when it runs north-south. Uh, we had shown on our plans that, um, the north property line, that fence, uh, followed suit with that as well and ran to the edge. Um, in talking with the neighbors, they would like to see it extend to the north front of the, of the house on the north side. Uh, so we all, were we all willing to make that change to our site plan. Um, and then extending past that fence, we, um, have, uh, some shrubbery as well to provide some additional screening on both the north and south property lines. On the western edge, uh, we have that heavily landscaped. Um, and as I mentioned, that is already under contract to be, to be installed. And then we have the additional landscaping ensure and the screening, um, of the rain garden in the project, um, along Ninetieth Street. In regards to the concerns of grading, I'm gonna step back. Um, one other concern that the, the neighbor to the north had, Spencer Murphy, um, is the property owner. Um, he wanted to see some additional, um, evergreen trees between the, the home and the, the fence line. Uh, we feel that is a little tight. It makes the area a little difficult to, um, uh, to circulate around the house. We are willing to give him an allowance to plant some trees on his property line if he accepts that, and that'd be a part of our condition to move on to City Council. Uh, Mr. Murphy is in the audience, uh, right now, um, so he can speak to that later, um, if he wants to. Um, going back in regards to the concerns of grading, uh, one of the main concerns was the velocity of, of runoff. We have increased the slope percentage on the west from around six to eight percent, which what it currently is, to, uh, about sixteen to twenty percent is that slope. That increases, uh, roughly over a twenty-five foot distance and, um, then resumes the original grade for the last five feet along the property line. Uh, the increase in slope will increase the time of concentration, um, from the current approximate, um, is a one point eight feet per second. Um, it will increase that to about three point one feet per second on that flow. Um, but per our experience, uh, that increase will not, um, cause any erosion problems, um, over the, um, assadded area. Um, the amount of water flow off the site will also not increase from the current numbers. Um, to address this concern further, as part of our moving on to the City Council agenda, uh, we are willing to provide an acceptable waterfall calculation to Colin Bagwell, who is the property owner to the west. That is his property, and his address is, uh, ten fifteen, South Ninety-first Circle, and Colin is, uh, in the audience as well tonight. Um, so we'll provide that to him and, uh, make myself available for any questions.
I have a question.
Yep.
So you've had one neighborhood meeting, is that right?
Correct.
And it's hard to tell from this plan, but are any of those trees on there existing trees?
There are, uh, there are some existing trees, and we have gone out and marked the, marked the trees, um, along the north proper, property line, which we are going to, uh, save.
Can you show on there? Do you know which ones are?
The majority of them are in this, this area of the site. It's kind of hard to tell from here. And then there's, uh, two or three back there in this corner, and then there's five. There's one right here, 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 and here.
Okay.
That are existing trees that will be saved. There is a lot of underbrush and, um, volunteer trees that will be cleaned up along that edge.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Well, what, what are the price points, uh, of these units?
Between six and eight-hundred-thousand.
Six hundred, what's the square footage gonna be?
About three thousand.
Is there, are there gonna be any covenants associated with, with any of these?
Yes.
Okay, so minimum-
It'll be part of the HOA.
Minimum of three, how many square feet?
I think three thousand is right, the range around.
And the architecture, you know, that, that neighborhood has got certain characteristic, correct characteristics. Are you going to keep the archi, try and keep the architecture as consistent with the neighborhood as possible?
This is the, the current, uh, elevations and materials that they have associate, that they have proposed for these buildings.
And what are the materials primarily gonna be consistent?
They have stone, you know, on the, on the front and back. I, you know, I don't have that materials list with me right now.
Quality?
Yes.
I assume?
At that price point, it's gonna be quality.
Okay. And you mentioned the fence line that you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna install there, but why wouldn't you extend that fence line further to the east on both sides? Other than just to connect it, I know that one, the south side, I think you're gonna extend a little bit further, but why wouldn't you extend that fence line a little bit further even to the east?
On the south?
On the south and the north, primarily on the north. I mean, you, 'cause you're only going the road there.
It starts to get a fence in someone's front yard, is what it, it ends up becoming.
A what?
A fence that becomes like a fence in your front yard. If we, if we extended this fence through here, it's like having a fence in your, in your front yard.
So are you concerned with the neighbor to the north, then?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause the, 'cause the back of, the backyards face Ninetieth Street in this illustration, is that right?
Right. And that, that s- stone and metal fence will be, in separating, uh, the point between the back of the lots and the rain garden, and it'll wrap around to tie into those, into those homes.
Okay, thank you.
And you indicated that you are not planning to put a sidewalk on the north side?
Correct.
Eric, what was that? A quest of the, um, homeowners to the, to the west to put the vinyl fence up, or was that just some-
That was, that was a request from the neighbors.
Okay, so you, you were originally gonna extend that wrought iron fence all the way down, or no, you weren't gonna have any fence?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? If you, if so, come on down and give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Spencer Murphy. I am the neighbor to the north. Um, and I'm not sure, actually, could I borrow that plan that you had up here? So just to note a couple of things, um, as to the, the fence that would be going in along here, um, it wasn't entirely clear if they were willing to go up to the front of this home here or up to the front of our home. Um, and there was a comment as to having that fence extend as far up as, as possible. Um, we'd prefer it to go as far as possible. We were just seeking to have it at least cover, um, in the current proposal, it, it only goes to about here, um, or, or maybe here. And, you know, our, all of our windows that are along this side would be looking directly down this road. So we were hoping at least to have it cover, you know, so that we're not looking, um, directly down that road. And I have a photo that would show that view.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you state your address, Spencer?
Oh, yes, uh, ten ten, South Ninetieth Street.
Thank you.
So this currently would be the view looking from, I was standing just outside of one of our master bedroom windows, so obviously there's, there's nothing there. Their only proposal at the current time is to put in, uh, I assume when they go in, they'll be two to three foot tall deciduous bushes. They claim they will go as high as six foot. Um, I'm hoping, we've talked about before, and it wasn't mentioned on the record, um, that they will change these bushes here from deciduous bushes to evergreen bushes that will grow taller than the fence. Um, with this addition of all these homes, um, it's assumed there will be, uh, light pollution, noise, uh, other things that could be addressed by having, you know, some sort of evergreen shrub that would be allowed to, you know, first of all, be, be green year-round, um, and second of all, would, would grow taller than the fence instead of just simply, um, shorter than the fence as, as currently proposed. He did mention there would be an, an allowance for, uh, trees, which would be great. Uh, the problem, I think that he mentioned that it would, the problem was between the house and the fence, and, and that is a problem, but there's a sewer easement right here, is my understanding. Uh, and the sewer line runs across my backyard to about here, and then they have created a sewer easement, um, that would run up to here, and I, I would assume that it runs down the middle of the drive and feeds to the homes from there. Um, the reason there's no trees or bushes here is they claim that they cannot put any trees or plants there because of the easement. Um, so what they've offered is to put, to give me an allowance to have trees to go in on this side. I would just note that, you know, if, it is somewhat of a burden to have me have to screen on my side and not have them screen on their side, um, but we would be willing to entertain, uh, an allowance, obviously.
I assume you would want to be involved in the decision, what type of trees would be-
Certainly.
-planted on your property?
Certainly. Um, and, and, you know, again, kind of the theme here, ever, some type of evergreen tree, um, that would provide year-round coverage. Um, the view, because part of the, the problem is that with that home being set, this home here being set back so far, uh, because of that sewer easement, we walk out onto our, into our backyard, um, we would look directly over, and this is, this tree is on the property line. It's, it's dead. They've indicated they would remove it. Um, that home would start right about where that orange fencing is, um, and we would have, you know, there would be a fence there, but over that fence, uh, it's a two-story home, and it's gonna be up higher on, in terms of the elevation. We'd be looking at the entire front of a facade of, of that new home, and all the noise and light that comes along with that.
And, and again, with, with trees being planted on your property, I just wanna make sure that you are in agreement, or at least would, would be one to compromise. Trees require maintenance.
Right.
Too, right? So, uh, I've got several trees on my property too, and every year they require a lot of maintenance. Are you okay with that?
I am okay with, with maintaining the trees, yes. Um, and, uh, so as long as the, the fencing comes up as far as possible, at least to the point of the front of my home, and there's an allowance for trees, uh, you know, subject to conditional, subject to those conditions prior to City Council, uh, we would be okay with it. You know, I will say that the grading in the back and on the northwest corner here is, is of concern. I'm not sure with increasing the grading from six to eight percent to sixteen to twenty percent, that it's really possible to put this many trees back here. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure what can be done to address that, uh, or, um, or how they can address that. Uh, the other thing I forgot to note, so the, I, I noted it before, but just to confirm, so the fencing, the allowance of trees, and then changing these deciduous bushes to evergreen bushes. And, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Any other opponents that wish to speak? From Ford, name and address, please.
I'm Mark Jacobson. I live at eight thirty, South Ninetieth Street. And I'll, I'll keep it brief. Uh, the issue that I have with this is the, is rezoning, um, in, increasing the density. So we'd be setting a precedent that any of those lots on the west side of Ninetieth Street, it's a pretty large lots, um, could be subdivided to two or three houses, and, and I'm opposed to that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any others opponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Okay, so we have two components to this request, the plat and the rezoning, um, with lot depth waiver, and then you have the PUR. So, um, when I get to the point of making a formal recommendation, I'll take one at a time to vote separately on those matters.
Yep.
Just to touch a little bit on the screening or fencing, um, there is no screening requirement with the proposed R four zoning and the R two zoning. So, just so we're aware, when we're talking fencing and landscaping, that, that's fine, that can be included, but there's no specific regulation that requires a certain distance or a certain amount. There's a five-foot setback requirement, which, um, this modified plan has increased that distance from previous layover proposal that we had seen back in May. Um, you know, we'd be fine with an extension of the privacy fence to the front of, um, Mr. Murphy's home on the north. It would have, it, it could not go all the way up to the front property line, though, so I know that's not being requested by either party. I just wanna point that out with privacy fencing and visibility concern, so, um, but I don't think that's an issue at all to the front of his home, so that would be acceptable. Um, of course, we don't have any problem with, um, the request for evergreen landscaping on that north edge, um, as well. So, um, as, as far as density, um, there's some large lots in this neighborhood. Um, the zoning is R two, which requires a ten thousand square foot minimum lot area, um, as the current zoning stands. With the request of the R four PUR, um, the site with being one point three four acres in size, they're at a little over eighty-three hundred square feet per unit, um, which is well in compliance with the proposed, um, R four zoning. Now, I know that differs than some of the surrounding lots, but, um, not all lot sizes are created equally in this area. So there is a mixture, but there are some very large lots that exceed that ten thousand square feet. Obviously, this site right now does, and it just had one previous home on it. I don't think I have much else to get into, so I'll make a recommendation first for agenda item number two.
Eric, can you address the sidewalk?
Yeah.
The sidewalk issue?
Oh, yeah, the sidewalk issue on the north lot. Um, I think that's within our PUR request. Let me double-check that real quick.
It's in number two.
It is number two, okay. A lot of comments, hard to keep them all straight in the exact locations. Um, you know, we, we think that the sidewalk should be there, providing a direct connection from that internal, you know, the street where all the fronting homes are. Um, to have a sidewalk on both the north and south side, it makes sense to us. I wouldn't expect a lot of foot traffic, but, you know, if you're those northern lots and you wanna, you know, walk, it's not the most pleasant sometimes with the traffic, but if you wanna take a, a nice stroll down Ninetieth Street, um, we believe that you should have access on, on either side, not have to walk, you know, all the way to the southern part of the property over to Ninetieth Street. So we, um, would, would keep that recommendation in place. Um, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's our thoughts. Okay, I guess any other questions before?
Go ahead.
Okay. So for agenda item two, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R two to DR and R four. Approval of the waiver to section fifty-three eight four A for lot depth. Approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report. An approval of the final plat, subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval and sub- submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council.
Okay. Do we have a motion on agenda item number two? Anyone wish to?
We'll make a motion just to...
Get a vote and get approved, or get input from the board. I'll make a recommendation, or make a motion to approve the rezoning from R2 to DR and R4. Approval of the waiver to section 53-84A, lot depth. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to meeting the six conditions outlined in the department's recommendation report. An approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable and final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Carnes?
No.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
No.
Mr. Chair? Okay, we don't have a quorum, so...
Okay. Do we take another motion?
We can check in here.
Do we have another mo, we need another motion on agenda item number two?
I'll make a motion to deny...
The request of zoning from R2 to DR and R4. Deny the waiver to section 53-84A, lot depth. Denial of the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions outlined in the recommendation report, and denial of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat and submittal of a acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding a request to city council.
Do we have a second?
I, let me just make some comments here, if I could.
That's all right. Go ahead.
This is a tough one for me. I'm not a fan of these types of rezoning requests personally, because I feel like people should have some certainty when they buy a home and there's a home next to them. And I would not want the home next to me to be torn down and this type of development to go in. That said, I know that we do need to move things forward in the city, and infill development is generally a good thing. I feel like Mr. Murphy has been incredibly amenable to working with the developer. I don't know that I would have been that kind, to be frank. I'm disappointed that there's only been one neighborhood meeting. Usually, this board likes to see multiple meetings with the neighbors and a lot of input. I don't think his requests are outrageous by any stretch. Like I said, I think he's being a lot more reasonable than I probably would be. So, it's difficult for me to outright deny a development request, but it's also very difficult for me to see this type of infill development where I think the neighborhood loses some certainty in to, in what people are buying a home next to, so...
May I speak on behalf of the company?
We'd have, we've closed the...
The public hearing's been closed.
Yeah.
Chris, what do you think?
I'm finished. Yeah.
The reason I've got some concerns with this are very similar to what Ms. Carnes expressed as well. As I mentioned and asked the question, you know, the neighborhood has certain characteristics, and rezoning to this type of project, to me, doesn't really fit that characteristic of that neighborhood very well. And I'm also concerned with the ingress and egress of this property as well. I mean, that 90th Street is a busy, busy street, and coming in and out of this, of these units is going to be difficult at best, especially if you want to go north off of 90th Street, which a lot of those neighbors already do there. But it's difficult, and you've got six, seven units now coming in and out of that subdivision. So, I'm with you. I understand that we've got, you know, redevelopment and infill developments are important to the city. I just don't think it fits that neighborhood well. And I don't want to get into a, into a position where we're approving these types of rezoning requests for areas in this area, in this area, on a consistent basis. And I do believe that that might be a possibility, because there are a lot of lots in this and properties in this, in this area that do get, houses get purchased, and then they raise the properties and rebuild, usually single-family, but there's nothing to prevent them, if they're large lots, of doing the same thing. And I don't want to get into that situation where that's what we're doing on a consistent basis. Not sure we will, but I just don't want to get into that position. So, I've got some concerns, and I understand, you know, it looks like a good project, the architecture looks good, but that neighborhood just has really distinct characteristics, I think, so...
Thank you, Mike. We have a motion. We do not have a second yet. Now, remember, any vote that we take that passes this board today will go on to the city council. So, there'll be another opportunity for a hearing in front of the city council. But we need a second if we're going to vote, and we had a motion for denial, just to remind everybody. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
No.
Moore?
No.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
So, we still don't have anything that we can pass on? Do we, we're going to sit here until we get a motion that works, so...
All right. I'll make...
We'll need another motion.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to approve the rezoning from R2 to DR and R4. Approve the waiver from 53-84A, lot depth. Approve the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions, but I'm actually going to add three more. And approval of the final plat subject to the conditions in the preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Okay.
And my three additional, my three additional conditions are to add deciduous bushes, I'm sorry, evergreen bushes along the northern edge, to allow Mr. Murphy to have a tree allowance that is mutually agreed upon, tree allowance, and a fence that extends all the way to the front of Mr. Murphy's home. And I would hope, this isn't a condition, but I would also hope that the developer would continue to work with the neighbors more than they have so far.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can we extend that fence all the way to the front of Mr. Murphy's property?
No. She said to the front of his home.
Not yet. So, no, it's...
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Okay. Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
No.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved.
So, regarding number three, the PUR component, several of those added conditions are more fitting in with the PUR, so I'll read our recommendation, but I would recommend repeating those three added conditions, because they're more site design specific, so I would incorporate into this as well.
Okay.
I just want to also make sure that the sidewalk is included. You've got that in the staff recommendation report on April 24th, but it's not listed as a condition, so do we need to list?
Well, there's, there's different sidewalk comments in different parts of the site, so...
But in the, in the report, you, on number two, you listed it as, plans do not appear to show a site or provided along the north side, revised plans to show it along the north side, but that's not one of the conditions. Do we need to make that a specific?
I guess I would group that in with an acceptable subdivision agreement.
You can make sure it's added in if you want to make that part of the motion.
Oh, when you, well, when you talk about an acceptable subdivision...
Part of the PUR plan as well. I believe it's covered with how it's been stated. So, for agenda item three, staff recommends approval of the PUR planned unit redevelopment subject to providing a final acceptable PUR plan prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval of PUR planned, excuse me, unit redevelopment, subject to providing a final acceptance PUR plan prior to forwarding to the press, to city council.
Do we need to?
Do you want to add the requirements, the conditions that Chris put on?
Yes. Yeah, they have the same requirements.
Do you want to list those?
Yeah. That was to provide a, to provide evergreen trees on the north side, or evergreen shrubbery on the north side, to extend the fencing to the front of Mr. Murphy's property, or I'm sorry, home, and then to also provide Mr. Murphy with a tree allowance.
Dave, is that a, go ahead, Chris.
I'm thinking also on the sidewalk, it doesn't, it shouldn't be north of that driveway, because then that prohibits...
No, it's not north of the driveway.
Yeah, okay.
It's the north part of Lot 7, which is south of that east-west driveway.
Okay. Got it.
Dave, Chris's amendments are fine for your...
Sorry to your motion.
That's fine. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
No.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number four, case C3-19-88. Applicant City Planning on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 2019 through 2023 consolidated plan. Location Omaha and three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. May we hear from the city, please?
Good afternoon, Nicole, City Planning, Community Development Division. We are requesting your approval this afternoon for the 2019 to 2023 five-year consolidated plan. This plan impacts our goals for our next five years with our HUD-provided funds, that's Community Development Block grant, Home Partnership Investment Funds, and Emergency Solutions Grant. Any questions? I am here to answer.
I have just one question.
Yeah.
So, this is a five-year plan, but can it be modified?
Yes, it can be modified. We can make amendments every year, and it also includes our 2019 action plan with the budget for that, and we will draft a new action plan that will come to you every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Just one comment, just so everybody here knows. Nicole presented the plan upstairs in our pre-meeting, so we had a chance to ask a lot of questions about this, this plan, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Agenda item number five, case C3-19-113. Applicant City Planning on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the amendments to the transportation element, land use element, and urban design element of the Omaha Master Plan for the inclusion of transit-oriented development. Location Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. Kelly, you're presenting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Kelly Johnson Dorsey with the Planning Department. And this is the first of two phases of our transit-oriented development project. We embarked on this project with the new orbit, the new Bus Rapid Transit Line was in action, and it's a way to ensure that development that's best suited for transit station locations is what we will hopefully slay along it. This is our first step, like I said. These are our master plan amendments, and it provides guidance for transit-oriented development. Our second stage would likely come in the fall, and that would be amendments to our zoning ordinance, our zoning code. So, we've had 11 public meetings thus far, and we've incorporated into these comments, we went through word for word with our stakeholder group of developers, designers, and neighborhood representatives, and incorporated those comments into what you have in your redline version. I have distributed also these amendments to our Neighborhood Association presidents, other stakeholders, anyone who has shown interest throughout the project. Have not heard opposition, just a few clarifying questions. I think you may be adding some additional ones today, so I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Any questions? Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Come forward, give your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, members of the planning board and all others in the room. I'm Alex Goswami, and I live at 427 North 41st Street, and I'm the treasurer of the Gifford Park Neighborhood Association, and I wanted to speak today as a proponent of the amendments to the master plan. I and a number of other people from the Neighborhood Association were part of the year-long stakeholders group, and so I wanted to comment on the efficacy of that group, and then also just emphasize a few of the goals of the plan for each day, so I'll be pretty brief. Year ago, Kelly Johnson Dorsey and a member, a number of the other people in the Planning Department organized a stakeholders group, as she mentioned. That was composed of developers, designers, a number of institutional and business interests around town, and neighborhood folks. And I want to emphasize the importance of all of those groups coming together, in particular as a representative of the Neighborhood Association in Gifford Park. It allowed for the opportunity for us to discuss the exquisite and unique and vital neighborhood characteristic of our neighborhood in particular, and the feedback from, that we gave to the Planning Department was particularly well-received in organizing meetings at all of the different stations that are around town. So, I wanted to emphasize how important that is and really encourage the Planning Department, as you have been doing, and the Planning Board, as you have been doing, to continue those neighborhood conversations, to get feedback. Because if this TOD project is going to be successful, it will be vital that there will be appropriate neighborhood feedback, so that way, the places where folks want to live in Omaha and do live in Omaha continue to be places where people want to live and work and play in Omaha. And that also folds in nicely to one of the goals on page 54 of the information in the master plan that Kelly gave you, it's just numbered 54 at the bottom, so in your packet, I don't know what number it is. But anyhow, one of the main goals is to respect the neighborhood context, and as I discussed earlier, and the other one is to support equitable access to housing, jobs, education, and entertainment. So, affordable housing, I think, there's a lot more room for a robust conversation about that and what equitable access means. These are a lot of terms that we use on a daily basis, and that means something different to everybody. And Gifford Park in particular is a very diverse neighborhood and is reputed as a place that is welcome to anybody because of the diversity of backgrounds, but also the diversity of income. And so, disrupting an ecosystem that delicate is something that should be done deliberately. And so, I support that goal very much in the amendment to the master plan. So, I want to continue this conversation about the TOD as it progresses, and I hope that if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. And, yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number seven, case C3-19-119. Applicant City Planning on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of amendment to the stormwater element of the city's master plan to update the watershed management plan and develop a new implementation plan. Location Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction.
Good afternoon, Chairman and other members of the Planning Board. Derek Miller, City Planning staff. We're here to request your approval of the amendment to the stormwater element of the city's master plan, watershed management plan, and the implementation plan. This effort and all the work put into this was over about a year process, meeting with our partner with the NRD and also every, all the other communities within the Papillion Creek watershed. The main goal of this agreement with all of our other partners is, of course, water quality and... is, of course, water quality and flood control. And I'm here to answer any questions. We also have, um, Mr. Jim Tyler and Mr. Jim Key from the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Derek. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional questions, comments from the board? Eric, do you want to add?
Nope, just recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Go for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Agenda Item Number 9. Case C 3-19-115. Applicant, Eric Weisler. Request approval of the 14 Howard Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location, 1402 and 1410 Howard Street. Can we hear from the applicant's representative? Don, you're on.
Oh, yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and I'll kick this off and then maybe turn it over to the project proponent or developer as well. Uh, this is a tax increment financing project located downtown at 14th and Howard. Involves two parcels and two buildings. Um, parcel, the parcel and building on the corner is a rather undistinguished, uh, one-story building that will be removed, demolished. That's this building here. Building next to it is a two-story historic brick building. Uh, that building will be rehabbed. Uh, the new building that's constructed and the rehab building will share an elevator and stairway system, and essentially fit, um, function as a single mixed-use building. Uh, the uses include, uh, 6,650 square feet of restaurant and bar, about 3,100 square feet of retail, approximately 6,300 square feet of office, and about 4,200 square feet of storage space. Uh, the design has been reviewed by our urban design staff and city planning. Here's the new building, and then the rehab historic building. They're all part of the project. Uh, we feel that it fits in very nicely with the site. Um, this new contemporary element actually picks up on some of the massing of the historic building quite nicely. The applicant is 1402 Howard LLC, Manager Eric Weisler. Um, this project total cost is a little over $4 million. Tiff support requested is about 400, is $475,000. There was a question earlier regarding an existing, uh, accessibility ramp for that historic building that's on the public right-of-way, and how it currently affects the adjoining property. And you can kind of see it in your, the applicant may address it as well, you can kind of see it in your, um, renderings that it gets replaced essentially with a, um, stair, so it doesn't affect this property any longer. And the ramp up will instead go to the door on the east end of the south facade, which, uh, then doesn't direct the traffic from the ramp down onto the neighboring property. So that's taken care of.
You say those were stairs? There?
I'll refer to the applicant, but I believe there's one or two stairs up to get to this door, just a small landing.
But then where's the accessibility ramp, then? The other door?
I can point. Um, so there's a door here and a door here. This one has a small step up. Currently, there's a ramp.
Right.
Real awkward little ramp that dumps it onto the sidewalk in front of the neighboring building and affects the neighboring building. Instead, um, you would enter here, go up the ramp, and use the south door on the east end of the building for your accessible entrance.
I'm missing something. How do you get up? Because if you're in a wheelchair, you can't go up the stairs.
There's the elevator, there's a ramp right there. Right next to the stairs.
Right next to the stairs, okay.
You come in here at sidewalk level, you go up the ramp to this door.
Okay. Thank you.
Site plan might. Uh, kind of, you can see the two doors here. There's a gap here, and this, this be like railing. So, yeah, there is like one or two steps to get to this door, and then a ramp up this way, or stairs come the other direction.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Um, the project meets the required criteria of the city's Tiff program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, uh, complies with the goals of the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Hello. Eric Weisler, 9217 Davenport Street. I'm the developer for the project and happy to answer any questions.
Eric, do you have tenants already set up?
For that?
Uh, we do have a bar and restaurant tenant that is, uh, going to take the corner building and utilize the rooftop patio as well. So, and we're actively working with some office tenants and some retailers for the leftover space at 1410 Howard.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Don, did you have? Okay. Eric, did you want to add anything?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 10, Case C 3-19-116. Applicant, Michael Sands, request approval of the 6121 Maple Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location, 6121 Maple Street. Don, are you presenting?
Yes, I am. Uh, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and we'll move into the Benson area. Project is located at the southwest corner of 62nd and Maple. It's really right in the heart of downtown, the downtown Benson Commercial District. Uh, the project will rehabilitate an existing one-story structure, so there'd be about 5,000 square feet on that level, that first level there. Um, it'll be rehab for weddings, meetings, dining, dancing, reception, similar gatherings. Building's in not great shape, and it's been vacant for a couple of years. In addition, it's not a real good aesthetic fit on the streetscape. It's, uh, kind of a homely building. Um, so plans are going to, uh, really dress up the facade. I'll show you some, uh, some renderings here in a moment. Um, but in addition to rehabbing the existing building, there's going to be a second-floor addition on the, roughly the south half of the second floor. Should be a restaurant and bar with patio seating. Um, this project has a total project investment of about $1.69 million. They're asking for $241,000 in Tiff support. Here's some renderings, although I think the sketch plan maybe gives you a better flavor for what the building's going to look like. The applicants have been working with our urban design staff, City Planning, very well as well. Um, the developer is, uh, P R LLC, Ryan Miller, is the ownership group's contact. Um, this project meets the required criteria for our Tiff program. It's an appropriate land use for the area. Think it'll be, um, an enhancement for Benson, um, uh, Commercial District, and it's consistent with the goals of the city's master plan. There had been some questions regarding how the second-floor additions will affect the neighboring building and some windows. I've asked the, uh, project proponent to address that for you as well, as whatever other statements he may have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Thanks. Michael Sands, 1700 Farnum Street, Farnum Street, Suite 1500. Uh, I'm the attorney for, for the project. I know Travis Broderston is in the audience as well, so he'll probably address that, that question on the windows, but happy to, uh, sit back and answer any other questions that you might have, and I'll, uh, I'll usher Travis up here to, uh, to talk to you.
Thank you. Travis, name and address, please.
Travis Broderston, Tierby Architecture, 440 Regency Parkway, Suite 138. Uh, I'm the architect of a record for it. Um, everybody's kind of described the project pretty well, but I understand there's a couple of questions about how we address the adjacent building and the three windows that are, uh, next to it. Um, as I understand, the owner has had conversations with the adjacent neighbor. Um, the buildings are actually built independent of one another, so the way we're addressing is we're actually putting, we have to have a two-hour fire separation between our building and their building. Um, so we are actually creating a, it'd be a masonry wall that would go directly in front of the windows. Um, we talked to the city, and they said provided that the windows weren't a means of egress for those spaces, um, they didn't have an issue with us building the wall. Uh, they, uh, spoke to the, or they had a floor plan for the existing building, and, uh, those windows do not, um, deter egress from those apartments that are next door. Any other questions I can ask, I'm available?
The entity next door has been made aware that those windows will be blocked?
I do not know.
And those, those windows, they're not into a bedroom?
Um, they're not into a bedroom. If I remember correctly, that's a kitchen and a living room.
For all three?
I don't recall. I, I don't know for sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm just curious, how close to those windows will that wall be?
Close. The foundation walls are, they're, they're touching each other right now, so there's probably a two- or three-inch gap between the face of what is the existing building and our new wall separating.
Eric, is that new information for the City Planning Department?
I have not looked at this site personally. Um, you know, we haven't had any site plan reviews that I'm aware of that would cross over into my division. I'm not involved in the, the Tiff applications much. Now, uh, the property is, is zoned M B D, and there is a zero-foot setback on the side yard, and all property lines.
I'm just curious about that, because I have a, a building we were kind of contemplating in, in the old market area, uh, very similar to that, where we had to maintain five feet separation from a window in an adjoining property.
I can't speak to that specifically, your project, but I, we went directly to, and met with the city, or the, the Plans and Permits Inspection Group to talk through the code-related issues that could come up by doing that. Um, their biggest concern was, or us acknowledging we needed two-hour fire separation between the two buildings, which we get with our wall, and, um, making sure that we didn't delay egress from those spaces by putting up the wall.
Okay, maybe the egress.
Don, is this something that you have information on?
Well, I just think I should probably add that, um, this is new information for me. I was aware of the windows, but generally, when I've dealt with, uh, downtown commercial buildings, build zero-lot line, there's a zero-lot line agreement between the buildings, um, between the building owners, something drawn up and writing. Apparently, uh, to my knowledge, that's not the case here, and, uh, I was not aware that the, I should let you know, I was not aware that the neighboring owner is not necessarily up to speed on this. So, uh, yeah, that's new to me.
Ultimately, you can't get a building permitted.
Yeah.
We're not that authority, so.
What would you say? Unfortunately, the developer can't be here. He's, he lives in Washington, DC. He's going to be here for the city council meeting. Um, I can't say, I, I don't think any of, either of us can definitively say. He very well, he very well may have talked to the neighbor, um, but I guess what I can guarantee, uh, today is that if he is not firm to do so in between now and the city council, um, hearing on the issue.
Dave made a good point, even if we decide to, uh, to approve the Tiff, that city permits and inspections would not allow this to go forward until that issue was taken care of, the windows.
With respect to, sorry, with respect to having?
A construction permit.
Okay. Despite the zero, uh, foot setback?
Well, zoning-wise allows the zero-foot setback between building codes, and, you know, that's not my area of expertise, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
The project would have to comply with, with all applicable building codes, fire separations, egress, ingress, it looks at all of that.
I know anything we need to do, the developer is willing, willing to do. So I, I know that, you know, keeping it on schedule as far as construction is a, um, a, uh, important issue for him, so I, I know that he is willing, if, uh, you know, if it's made with a stipulation that, that he needs to go up to the neighbor and, and provide some sort of, um, um, resolution to city council, then I, I'm sure he'll be willing to do that.
Thank you. Any, I haven't asked for opponents. Are there any pro, any additional proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hi, thanks for having me. Mark Brannan, 6915 Evans Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. I'm here representing myself, although I am also the Secretary of the Benson Neighborhood Association. I doubt that neighbor has been notified, as none of the neighbors, uh, or the Neighborhood Association has been notified of this project. Something we would have appreciated. Um, I'd like to point to number six of the, uh, there was an attachment online to this, uh, to this agenda item, uh, that this, I would strongly argue that this is not the best and highest use for this building. As a member of the Neighborhood Association, one of our biggest complaints from neighbors is, uh, the noise from the strip at night, uh, the crowds from the strip, the medicine strip at night. Um, as the project notes, there is no parking. Obviously, there's nowhere for this project to have parking, so it relies on street parking. Uh, not sure if anybody is familiar with, uh, Friday or Saturday at night on Benson, but street parking extends nearly half a mile south into the neighborhood, both sides of the street, um, and these are patrons of these very bars. Um, the owner unfortunately cannot be here, he's in Washington, DC. Um, I'm sure he wants to move along quickly so he can, uh, begin to recoup his money. Uh, 14.2% of the total cost is what he's asking for. There's six investors in this project, and they said that it's not financially feasible without the Tiff loans. Uh, but then, uh, I don't know if you guys have this, or if it's, if it's available. It was not online, but there was no return on investment, um, uh, there was no return on investment that I could see, the, the analysis, that is required, that is a requirement of Tiff. Um, another point is that if this isn't financially feasible without Tiff, do you think perhaps it could be because they overpaid for the building? And, uh, they paid $650,000 for a building valued at $372,000 at the time, overpaying by over 200 and some thousand dollars. Um, and then the owner specifically claimed that he's going after this project because it is in the Tiff zone. Um, but most importantly, I would strongly encourage, this is, uh, the, the document that David Fanzal provided, this is not the best use for this property. Um, I don't know the exact number, but there's enough bars in Benson right now, okay? Um, that is, we had a, we had a neighborhood visioning session last year with, uh, facilitated by One Omaha, a great organization. Uh, one of the strongest points that, uh, universally among the neighbors was that we want more diversity of businesses, uh, businesses that we can visit during the day, um, not more bars. And, and an event center catering to, to weddings, where are all those guests going to park? This, this is not a well-thought-out project. Blocking the windows of, of somebody's kitchen, I mean, this is clearly not ready to be advanced. So, that would be my point. Again, I'm a member of the Neighborhood Association, but speaking on my own behalf as a citizen, but I would strongly encourage the developers to, to contact the Neighborhood Association so that they can get our input. Thank you very much. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mark.
But I do have to go quick, because I think I have a parking ticket.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you want to come up and address some of the points that Mark made?
As, as far as parking, that was something that was.
Need your name and address again?
Yes, Michael Sands, 1700 Farnum Street, Suite 1500. Um, as far as parking, that was something that came up at the Tiff Committee Meeting that I've been talking to Don with. Apparently, there was, uh, at least an agreement in principle in place to arrange for parking. That may be cost prohibitive now, but they're, they're not just leaving parking up to chance. They're going to, they're actively seeking parking agreements, um, in the area and trying to figure that out for, for the, for the large-scale events.
There's not many areas to, to, to secure, is there?
Uh, I, I'm not sure what you meant by that. I mean, I think that the. I mean, I think that the, the concern of the, I don't think the real concern is the upper level. And to be, to respond to another, another issue, it's, it's not really a bar. It's an event center for weddings. There's been a real, there's a pretty comprehensive market kind of research section in here that talks about, this, this development group was, owns Bar Chen. They were instrumental in, in creating Benson Brewery. And there's been a ton of demand for larger events in the area because people love the area and want to have their weddings there. They want to hold business, events there, et cetera. So, it, it is not a bar. It's, it's an event center. The upper level is, is juggling around concepts. That'll be either kind of a restaurant area or kind of a revolving kitchen area where local chefs can come in and present their foods that they cook. So, I would take exception to that there's enough bars in Benson. This is not your 1912 across the street. It's nothing like that. But as far as the, I think the issue with parking is probably for the, the larger events that, that would house, you know, the wedding parties and things like that. And so, I'm not, I'd have to get clarification on what he's been contemplating, but I thought, I think that, and I don't know, Travis, have you talked to him at all?
No.
I think, I think the, what they were thinking is that they would have an outside parking lot and, and kind of bus people in would, would be, is, is what I think that they were looking at as far as the larger events.
Seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions on this project. Is it a bar or is it an event center? Is the parking going to be enough? Are the neighbors, have the neighbors been notified? Have you gotten input? I mean, there's a lot of unanswered questions on this project. I don't know.
Yeah. To be fair, I think that the application's fairly comprehensive. There is an ROI on air. It gives a comprehensive narrative of exactly what it is going to be. So, I realize there's the unanswered questions about the, the neighbor, the direct neighbor. And I'm sure they're willing to work, talk to the neighborhood association also. But I, I think we would argue that, that this is a, a high and best use of the building.
Michael, did you say you did talk to the neighborhood association?
No, I said, I'm, I'm sure that the developer is willing to do so in between now and then.
I just misunderstood.
Yep. So, I get that they, that some of the neighborly things have been on address and I'm sure, I, I'm certain that he is willing to do so in the interim, but I, I guess I think that the, the project is, is outlined in the application as approved by the TIF committee, but I'm happy to, to answer any questions, I guess, that, that continue to linger.
Okay. Any additional questions for Michael? Thank you. And only if somebody calls you up, Mark.
Yes.
Any additional comments or questions from the board?
Just as a reminder, all we're doing with here is the TIF application.
That's correct. Did you want to add anything, Eric?
Yeah, I just want to touch on the notification process a little bit for tax increment financing. It's, it's a little bit different than the special use permits or rezonings or plating notifications. Those are usually to property owners within 300 feet. When you have redevelopment plans or tax increment financing, we notify the, the taxing entities within the city, usually those are school districts, MUD, OPPD, NRD, things like that. We also notify registered neighborhood associations that we have on file with us within one mile of, neighborhood associations registered within one mile of the subject site. And so, that can include multiple neighborhood associations. We have, you know, multiple ones here for this. I don't, I don't know if, so we have, you know, official copy of ones that we've mailed by certified mail, but we also have an email list that those neighborhood associations have agreed to receive these notifications via email. I don't have the exact list in front of me, so I just wanted to touch on that. Like I said, we, information does sometimes change with those neighborhood associations, so we, we always want the most up-to-date contact information or addresses to send to. Sometimes, sometimes that can be a challenge, but, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that one was sent or wasn't sent, you know, I, but I just wanted to touch on that. Staff, the recommendation report is for approval. This is, you know, before you is the TIF recommendation. It's not a site plan review per se. Now, if, if the board feels inclined to, to layover that, you know, that would be up to you.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Is there a motion?
I'm in for layover.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rose Harker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to layover is approved.
Moving on, agenda item number 11, KC 3-19-117. Applicant Lang Law LLC. Request approval of the Elkhorn Station TIF redevelopment project plan. Location southeast of 206th Street and Elkhorn Drive. Don, are you presenting?
Yes, I will. Just a moment. And by the way, we will follow up on those items as well for the previous case. Okay. This TIF project is located in downtown Elkhorn. It occupies four parcels, includes frontage along Main Street, Main Street Elkhorn and Elkhorn Drive, both. There's three buildings remaining on the site. There were some others previously. Project site includes this half block area here and then this parcel here. Some of those buildings have been removed. There are three that remain. Those will be demolished as well to make room for a pair of new four-story mixed-use buildings, two new buildings. The upper floors of these four-story buildings, third, second, third, fourth floor will be apartment units. The lower level of the building to the east, site plan here, put north to the top, Main Street Elkhorn, Main Street Elkhorn, Elkhorn Drive. One apartment building here with first floor retail and commercial office along Main Street. The other apartment building is over here with frontage on Elkhorn Drive and the retail is oriented towards Elkhorn Drive as well with the apartments on the upper levels. Two buildings combined have a total of 90 apartment units. They're one and two-bedroom units. There will be 94 onsite surface, pardon me, 94 surface parking spaces with this project and 90 garage stall parking spaces. There'll be a rather large amount of improvements constructed with this project. Includes the public parking area on the railroad right of way, which will help serve some of the uses along Main Street, and then improvements to North 206th Street. Presently, North 206th Street is unimproved. It's basically kind of an overgrown drainage ditch right now. So, that'll be improved for parking and a fairly significant piece of storm sewer will be constructed in there as well. The developer is Paqueto LLC. Don Gardner is manager. Mr. Gardner knows Elkhorn well. He's developed previously in Elkhorn, has another TIF project nearby in Elkhorn. Total project cost on this is a $16.2 million, $16,200,000 project. They're requesting 3.2 million in TIF support. Project complies with the master plan, meets the TIF program criteria and is an appropriate use for the area. We ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Chairman Rosenbaum, members of the Omaha Planning Board. My name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at 8526 F Street. I represent the applicant. Picadu LLC, one of our things we're going to do, we're going to change our name. That's the first thing, eventually change that.
Is that for Perry, Kevin and Don?
Yes, yes. That's right. It was not my idea.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is just briefly, Don did a good job of explaining the project. This is the next phase of this redevelopment project. Don Gardner has been the catalyst on the first two phases. Adds additional parking and additional public improvements, and it also adds a quiet zone where the railroad exists just to the south. And the quiet zone's a fairly expensive project as part of this. It's about $500,000 in working with the New Pacific Railroad to create the quiet, quiet zone, so, because the apartments are going to be so near, so that's been addressed as well. So, we're asking for the support of the planning board. Like I say, Don's done a good job of working with us on this as well as the remainder of the city staff, so we're asking for your recommendation of approval. If you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Mr. Lang, I do have just a couple of questions in regards to the amount of the TIF.
Right.
Requested. It's almost 20% of the estimated project cost of $16.2 million.
Correct.
Right? Of that $16.2 million, roughly $2 million of that is for infrastructure, sidewalks, parking, streets, sewer, whatever. In a five and a quarter cap rate, based on a net operating income approach to this, that five and a quarter percent cap rate seems really low for that area, for this project particularly. I haven't seen a five and a quarter, maybe you have, I don't know. I haven't seen many in the five and a quarter cap rates around. So, can you address that? I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're over, we're over committing the TIF amount of this thing based upon what the true project costs are, are to this. And the other thing is too, is if the project comes in that are lower than, the value comes in lower than the project costs, is the developer willing to pay the difference in the taxes between the tax increment financing that was committed and what is the, the true value of the property?
Yes. Answering your last question, is the developer, when he gets the TIF note, obviously you get a loan in the TIF note, you pledge the TIF note and you try to line up your payments with the payments in the TIF with your lender.
Based upon what the estimated future value of that property is?
That's correct. So, it's, if it's 3.2 million, it's going to be the 3.2 million plus interest over a period of 15 years, up to a period of 15 years. So, if there's a shortfall initially, and a lot of times on these TIF notes, that's the way it is because it takes a while for the valuation to reach the full valuation of the project. The developer then comes up with the additional funds. Initially, Don had to do that on that first phase as well. Now, after it's been four, five, six years, now the valuation has caught up to the, to the estimated valuation on that as well. So, we anticipate that happening. So, there's going to be a shortfall initially for the first four or five years until the valuation gets to a point where we have full valuation, plus as you know, we have a little bit of increase in real estate values, especially apartments. Right now, apartments are, are, values are very high with apartments. So, as you look at this over a period of 15 years, and as you look historically at TIF notes, the valuation, when you get to years 10 and 12, generally is going to exceed your estimated valuation right now. So, we feel based upon the valuation we have, the TIF note will pay itself off over a period of 15 years. And the reason it's high proportionately is because of the public improvements involved.
Yeah.
The storm sewer to the west, the street to the west, the quiet zone, the public parking that's being installed, which is a real asset to this particular area, which is all going to be public parking for the, for the area, not only for these apartments and for these retail centers, but for the area at large. And Don's worked with the area very closely. One of the needs for the area is parking, especially for like Belladita and the other restaurants in the areas. So, this is bringing a, a need there.
If I might, if I might, there. I understand TIF, I financed TIF projects in the past, so I understand. And usually there's a two-year period where it's just interest only on that, right? And then it kicks in to get the valuation to the point where we, we think it would be. But the valuation that you're using, estimated valuation that you're using is based on a five and a quarter cap rate.
Right.
On a net operating income.
Mm-hmm.
Is that based on a full occupancy of the apartments and retail space? Because if you're off by 10% or 20% to that, and a five and a quarter cap rate on that, it's not going to, it's not going to value out at, at that price. So, is that based on full occupancy?
That's based upon substantially full occupancy, which is, I think we used a, we used maybe like a five, if I recall, five to seven percent vacancy rate in, in the estimated cost. So, we do have a vacancy rate there. As you know, the apartments right now are, the cap rates on apartments are very low as far as values go, as we're seeing in the sales that occur here in the city, plus the cost of apartments and construction wise have gone way up and accordingly rents have gone up as well to a certain extent. So, and that's, of course, that ties back into the need for the TIF as well because the construction costs for the apartments and the retail, and in particular the apartments, is getting higher and we have the return there, and so that goes back to our, our rate of return for the TIF. It's kind of ties into, once again, our need but for test for the TIF at this location.
Yeah.
And once again, and going back to the, to our need for the TIF is, starting with the acquisition cost, when Don Gardner acquired the three parcels, we still have two, he's taken down on the UP leased property to the south where the parking is going to go. He's, he's removed the buildings that I think you saw previously on there at his cost. He's also removed one other building. There's going to be three other buildings removed, demolition costs, those are all of course TIF eligible. But once again, in a redevelopment site like this, you have those extra costs and that's why we have the TIF and that's why we're asking for the TIF as well.
Yeah.
Going back to the cap rate, we, it is, it is low, but we feel over, because these are our apartments and we have some pretty good density here, we feel over a period of time that the, the TIF note will pay itself off over the 15-year period.
Okay.
And as you know, we, we have our estimated values right now in the TIF, but as the City of Omaha TIF program, the city never gives us increased in valuation in let's say years eight or 10.
Right.
And I think we've seen historically TIFs, except for times during the recession, they generally pay off in about 12 years. So, we feel there's additional...
It'll be up to the lender who's financing the TIF to decide whether or not it's, it's...
That's correct.
Right, okay. And so, I get that meant. And don't get me wrong, I, I think this is a great project for this area, I truly do. I just don't, I just don't want to make sure, I want to make sure we're not over committing
Right.
The TIF amount on this project, or any project for that matter, but this project, based upon what I see in front of me here.
And Mr. Gardner's gone through this, and we addressed that too, and we addressed it with Don here as well. And we know we're, you know, because of the public, the amount of public improvements and the density, we know we're pushing it on the TIF a little bit, but we feel with the values there and in the anticipated value as we go forward, the TIF will pay itself off over the 15-year period.
Okay. Thanks.
Hey, unrelated to the TIF, but just for my own purposes, on the southeast corner where it runs into Main Street, whatever, how did that get resolved with the city? Yes, that entrance right there.
The access point?
Just right in and that's all?
That's right. Right in, you get circulation. So, you go right in and then you have the circulation through the side.
Back around, okay.
Right.
All right. Through 206th door up through, okay.
Right. And there's been a design that has been submitted. I think Eric may have seen it too, so.
All right. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Don, did you want to come up and add something?
Just a couple of follow-up things real briefly. One is that I'm looking at the three-year stabilized NOI pro forma, and there is a 5% vacancy rate built into that.
Retail? Total occupancy of, of all space?
It's on both, yes. Yes. And listening to Mr. Lang's response to your questions, it sounds to me like they are expecting the final valuation to maybe be a little low on the first few years and then catch up as a property appreciates and as the markets go up. We occasionally get applicants who want to do that very aggressively and build it into our amortization table that we use to analyze TIFs, and we will not do that. But I would note that the 16.2 million valuation that they're estimating has been reviewed by the TIF committee. And while they may be expecting it to be a little on the high side for the first few years, it's not an unreasonably high amount and they should be able to service the TIF. Most of our TIF notes have been paying off relatively early comparatively. I think that's primarily because there is an escalation in property values over that 15 years, but we take a conservative approach, probably maybe a little too conservative and we don't build an escalator into our calculations.
My concerns are more with just, just that, again, the cap rate that, that was assigned to, to determine the value as well as $2 million of improvements that don't necessarily correlate to the valuation. There is an indirect correlation. There is an indirect correlation, but not a direct correlation.
Yeah.
So that was my concern.
Noted, and we had some of the same concerns and discussed them very early on in the project review. Regarding the access that you were asking about into that south parking lot, we did cover that with the applicants as well and with the city engineering department, Ryan. And we're looking at some sort of like a pork chop or T-bone type of curb structure that will keep northbound traffic from being able to physically prevent them from turning into that lot. So it is.
There was a big concern about stacking with Union Pacific Railroad there if you're coming from the south heading north.
Correct. When you're coming from the south heading north, you will not be able to make a left turn into that and stack up. So they'll have to circle, circle the block to get to the site. And we have had that discussion and they're aware that that's going to be a requirement before you get any building permit.
Okay, thank you, Don. Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just there will be a plating component that would come before the Planning Board and City Council at some point in the future as well. So you'll see that at a later date.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, I'm just going to just quickly say, Jim, if you want to pass on to Don and Kevin and Perry, there's a lot of others out there, Carl Anderson, Barbie Hayes, a lot of other people out there. But they've done a great job of revitalizing that downtown Elkhorn area and they've done it, some of them at their own hard work and some of them not with TIF, but they've done a great job down there.
I appreciate it and I'll pass it on. And also we appreciate the assistance of Don here and Eric and city staff. They've been great on this project. And the project, this is like the third phase, so the project's really starting to come along. And I think in four or five years, three or four years, you're really going to see a kind of a dynamic element down there. And it's coming in the old downtown area. So we appreciate your, your support.
You bet. Do we have a motion?
Before we do that.
Okay, go ahead.
I need to disclose that, well, I don't have any financial interest in it, but I was contacted by Don Gardner this afternoon about providing construction consulting services. We have no deal. He just called me to see if we could talk about it.
I don't think you need to recuse yourself over that.
No, I'll be a little bit, but I just thought I should disclose that.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number 12 is case C-3-19-118. Advocate Todd Lieberman requests approval of the Nobility Point Highlander Phase III TIF redevelopment project plan, location 3031 Blondo Street. Bridget, you're presenting.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Board members. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is the Nobility Point Highlander Phase III TIF redevelopment project plan. This property that is outlined here shaded in blue is at the corner of 30th, North 30th here and Parker Street. And of course, this is the vacant lot here. It is a part of the former Pleasant View Homes Housing Development Project and now part of the 75 North Highlander redevelopment area. And part of the vision of the 75 North Revitalization Corporation, which Othello Metals is the, I want to get your title right, President and CEO of, and here also to speak about the project. Part of their, their vision and goal is certainly in line with the city's master plan for infill redevelopment and community and neighborhood revitalization. And if I can steal or borrow from a quote from their website, 75 North Corporation said that one of their main purposes is to facilitate the revitalization of a healthy, sustainable, mixed-income community in North Omaha's Highlander neighborhood. So again, definitely in line with the city's master plan goals and objectives for revitalization. As I mentioned, this is a vacant lot at this particular intersection, and it is the third project, Phase III of the vision for this redevelopment area. The first project was 101 mixed-income apartment units. These represent the townhomes or row homes, and they were all rental. So townhomes and row homes in this section and then apartments here about Blondo, 30th and Blondo, and then on the east side of North 30th, some more mixed-income apartments. So 101 units. And then Phase II was the accelerator building in the venue. And some may have already been visited the place, but that was Phase II. So this is Phase III and future phases would involve housing detached and attached housing potentially in that area. So again, the project is certainly in line with our goals. The TIF committee has reviewed this and given its approval. The proposed project, and here is the site plan, is a one-story, excuse me, one building but three-story building and 60 units of apartments, one and two bedrooms. The public improvements that are projected for this particular project mainly are a new parking tray here for parallel parking, new improvements to the sidewalk here. Most of the sidewalks and public improvements along North 30th adjacent to this particular project have already been completed. So this parallel parking is in, this new sidewalk and streetscaping. So they'll just complete that streetscaping and sidewalk to the south of the project. There's about 55 stalls that are proposed in this area. This here, I don't know if you can really see it, but they're proposing some community gardens in this particular area. So this particular project will kind of, not kind of, but it will complete this corner of this particular redevelopment site. Here are some elevations which have been reviewed by our urban design team. Let's see, this is the southern elevation. This here is a north elevation, and I'm not sure if you can really see it very well. And then this is the north elevation. And then I have a west elevation here and then a south, another south elevation. So again, a building that is, a building and a project that is addressing the needs of our senior housing, for affordable housing as well as just for senior housing. And Othello, I think, can speak certainly much more directly to that. The TIF amount that is being requested is $200,000. They had requested more, but the project only supports $200,000. And kind of harkening back to the last project, when we talk about values, valuations, in this particular project, the total investment is a little over $12 million to construct this property or this project. However, because it involves low-income housing tax credits and because as a result of that, it's low-income and rent restricted, that restricts the valuation. So the valuation that would be assessed is going to be much, much lower than the investment into this project. So with that in mind, it only supports $200,000 in TIF, which is about 1.6% of the total funding. As I had mentioned, the public improvements already and which are sidewalks and streetscaping and then parallel parking in here. It's already zoned R7 ACI 1 with the PUR overlay. And that rezoning was already done as a result of Phase I and Phase II when they totally redeveloped, raided the site initially. And then as far as transportation, I just wanted to address that along North 30th Street, there has been discussion over the years about a road diet. And what is proposed is asphalt overlay in 2020 from coming to Ames Avenue. There's already a road diet that's occurred basically between Parker and about Burdette Street where the project is, has been moving along and proceeding. And then there's also a reconfiguration of North 30th Street to add bike lanes and on-street parking on the west side of North 30th Street. So that's part of the road diet project plan that's proposed for this particular project. With that, I would ask for your approval and turn it over to Othello.
Okay, thank you, Bridget. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Othello Metals for 75 Revitalization Corporation, 2112 North 30th Street, Suite 200.
Thank you.
As Bridget talked about, this is, one of the things I really want to point out is that the senior component of what we're doing is really part of a larger kind of holistic redevelopment effort of which we think seniors are essential and vital. Our neighborhood has a rapidly aging population. And quite honestly, I can't go to the grocery store now without bumping into somebody that asks when we're going to build senior housing. So the demand is there and we are starting to see people sort of remember why they love this neighborhood. The senior is just kind of the next step in that after this development, we'll move into homeownership. One of the things, there's an abundance of rental in our work so far. One of the things we wanted to do was sort of re-densify the neighborhood and bring people back first to help create that demand for homeownership. So that's on the horizon as well. But we are excited about this project and excited to keep some momentum going on North 30th Street. So I'm happy to take any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
It's been two hours. Does anybody want to take a break or do you want to keep going? Okay.
I'm recusing myself on item 14.
All right. Let the record show that Chris recused herself on agenda item number 14. All right, agenda item number 14, case C-10-19-120, C-12-19-121. Advocate RLR Investments LLC. This was on for approval, it has been removed. The request is preliminary plat approval of R&amp;L Carriers Edition, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to GI. Location northeast of 117th and State Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Stan Richards. I'm with RLR Investments, R&amp;L Carriers. Address is 600 Gillum Lane, Wilmington, Ohio 45177. Appreciate Chairman and Board members you allowing me to speak this afternoon. R&amp;L Carriers is a logistics company. We pride ourselves in the fact that we're an LTL company. That's an industry term that means less than loaded. How's that beneficial? Well, we don't need a full shipment to ship a load out of here. If we have a mom and pop garage or a small business, we take pride that we'll go and pick up that one shipment from that mom and pop. We have been operating in La Vista off of Gertred Street since 2004. So we've been in the area, we've been in the neighborhood. You've probably seen some of our green trucks around, hopefully. And hopefully, a good representation of what we ought to be. But we have 51 employees that we will be relocating over here. And then we hope in the next two to three years to increase the employment by 30% on the employment. Currently, we operate out of what is considered a 65-door facility over there in La Vista. We are going to construct an 80-door facility, dock-door facility. This is a cross-dock facility. And that property over there, we're landlocked, we can't go any further. So we've reached out and we determined that this market is a good place for us. So respectfully, we request the preliminary plat. If you look, this is State Street right here. Got going north, 117th. We are looking at the total of about 37 acres here. We're going to be doing two sections here, Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 1 is 24.89 acres, Lot 2 is 11.48 acres. And then you've got 114th going up, well, 114th comes to the south and then that's it. We are going to be constructing in Lot 1 and using Lot 2 as future improvements or future build-out someday if the market demands it.
Okay, any questions for Stan? Thank you. Any additional proponents that wish to speak?
Hi, my name's Chris Terry, 6309 Northern Lights Lane, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. I just came to listen today, but I figured I would let you guys know that I am on board. We have the property to the south between 114th and, excuse me, between 114th and 117th Street, and we're, we're on board, so.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? No? Okay, close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments? Eric?
Yeah, so a pretty straightforward request, rezoning from AG to GI in the two lots as shown and mentioned by Stan. There's just a few modifications that we'll need the preliminary plat to do and that deals with 114th Street right away and showing the future improvement and extension of that street as well as showing a public dedication. But we can work with the applicant on providing an acceptable phasing plan that could push off those improvements of 114th Street. It doesn't sound like they plan on plating that second lot on the eastern side for some time. So definitely willing to work with the applicant on the best way to achieve those deferments. Otherwise, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from AG to GI, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 14 conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion? Make motion for approval of the rezoning from AG to GI and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 14 conditions in the staff report. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, we're going to take agenda items number 15 and 25 to get. Yes, Stan, thank you. Let the record show that Chris Carnes has come back to the meeting. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-19-135, C-12-19-122. Advocate Michael Walker. This was on for layover, has been pulled off. The request, preliminary plat approval of Lone Pine Subdivision, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage, along with rezoning from DR and CC to DR and CC. Property is located within the ED Environmental Resources Overlay District, the Flood Fringe Overlay District and the Floodway Overlay District. Location 14445 North River Drive. And agenda item number 25, which is case C-8-19-106, C-8-19-111. Advocate, again, is Michael Walker. This was on for layover, it was pulled off. The request, approval of a special use permit to allow development within the ED Environmental Resources Overlay District, and a special use permit to allow a campground in the DR District. A portion of the property is located in the Flood Fringe and Floodway Overlay District's location, 14445 North River Drive, is the applicant here.
Hi, good afternoon, Mike Walker, 14445 North River Drive. And I wasn't expecting to speak today because we were on the agenda for layover, but I'll take the opportunity to introduce myself. And I don't really have much except for just a small picture and a little bit of news on the project. I don't know how to turn this on.
It's on.
Oh, it is on, okay.
You got to give it a turn.
So I'll put that up there.
Can you give that a turn?
This is actually from your office.
Can you give it a turn?
Give it a turn?
Yeah, there you go. That'll be helpful.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. So, but we're a company that's been operating in business now for 70 years. I took the company over in 2013. And we have 25 employees that we currently employ seven to eight months out of the year. And we're looking at purchasing, actually, we didn't, the city, we didn't purchase, but I purchased the property to the south. I purchased the property to the south. And so there's two different entities, Lone Pine, LLC would be operating the future campground, and then the Surfside Club will be the existing company. We think the two would complement each other. So, but I was just wanting to, there's, I've been talking with the neighbors, and so I was wanting to address a few issues, such as fencing. The, one of my neighbors right behind wanted a fence along this area. And then screening along this area, there's already an eight to ten-foot fence there. This is Stratbuckers property, by the way. So we plan on putting a row of trees there, popular trees, or something that will screen the property from the south. And then fencing for security so that our customers or tenants don't waver off into the property up in the hills. Noise is another issue that was brought up. This area here is about a hundred and fifty feet higher than this area here. And so we've got a large tree buffer along here, which should, we feel, would suppress quite a bit of noise. Not that we're going to have a noisy facility in the first place, but it does offer that buffer, and I'd like to point it out. And so, and then we're also, I just found out, we've got our last acquisition for the easements on the new water line. This entire area, all around here, very, just terrible water. A lot of people are hauling water. We actually haul all of our water to the surf side. But with this project, we can warrant the expense of putting a water line. So we've got our last easement. It looks like it's a go on the water line for a two and a half mile water line project. So we'll be able to offer a four-inch water line. And everybody to the south, or from the south of this entrance, it will accommodate another eighteen single-family dwellings to, you know, that four-inch line. So we're pretty happy about that. We're going to have more drawings, you know, because of the layover, I didn't bring, you know, hardly anything. Again, just wanted to introduce myself and take the opportunity to put a name to, a face to it.
Is that an M U D line?
I'm sorry, again?
Is that an M U D?
It's, it would be Fort Calhoun Water Supply, which actually, I believe is M U D, but they call it Fort Calhoun. N R D is who we go through for the project. So we've been working on that for a year and a half. And again, I said, I'm just excited about it now because we acquired our last easement acquisition, and until you get that, you don't have really a water line, so. But with that, I look forward to the next meeting. I'll have a lot more to show you. That's kind of a small tidbit of our project, and I will yield the floor or answer any questions you might have.
Any additional questions for Michael? Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come forward and give your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Terry Crawford. Thirty-three twelve Hamilton Street is where I grew up. I am here in opposition of this project for several reasons, and I just want to share a couple of stories with you, and I promise I'll make it relevant and I'll keep it short. One of the stories is about a young man who was in his own home with his girlfriend. She called her brothers to come to retrieve her items from her home. He was in his home, and these three individuals went inside his home. He was shoved by one of the individuals, and he had a registered firearm in his home. He was attempting to protect his own home with his registered firearm. He called the police. The police showed up on the scene. He is now in custody in Douglas County and is on a three hundred thousand dollar bond for terroristic threats in his own home. Now, if we change those facts ever so slightly, then that brings us to Surfside and an incident that occurred there. It went viral, and I'm not sure how savvy you are on social media, but this event went viral on social media that took place at Surfside. A very unassuming young man who is standing at the lagoon skipping rocks. I'm old enough to remember skipping rocks, and maybe some of you are, I don't know. He was skipping rocks with his dog, very unassuming, nonviolent, kind of to himself in that environment. He's approached by Mr. Walker. There is some words between the two of them. I was not present, however, I know the individual very well, and I know his character. He was shoved by Mr. Walker. This incident escalated to the point where Mr. Walker went to his vehicle, he retrieved his firearm, he discharged that firearm. The young man who was present on his property at Surfside called the police himself. Mr. Walker called the police, and he said two very important things that I think you should know, and that individuals who's listening to this tape later on at this hearing and also at city council, he said two very important things. He was in fear of his life, and he said that he felt threatened. We know what those key terms mean. If you have any information regarding the disparity in the criminal justice system, we know what those terms mean to the police. So they showed up at Surfside on that day. They had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Walker and also talk to the young man, who, by the way, is here today. The police decided at that time that because it was private property, that there was no recourse for the young man. So this was a terroristic threat by definition that Mr. Walker engaged in. He discharged his firearm within the city limits, and he walked away scot-free. And not only did he say those two things to police officers, but he also called in the N-word. I was not present, as I said, but the young man is here, and he can speak to that himself. The reason why I think this is important for this planning board to hear is because I think it's important that you should know whether or not, number one, the individuals that are asking for approval of these projects are good stewards. Are they good neighbors, and are they individuals of good character? And I think for all three of those things, for Mr. Walker, we would have to say no today. Those are all of my comments. I've been here since one o'clock, so I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Terry. I thought about, I thought about cutting you off. I'm sorry, I'm not going to make the comment, but, well, I'll just leave it at that. And you, I allowed you to make that comment, and that's fine. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Sir, come forward. Now, remember, I'll just say this, we're here for a planning board issues, and there's issues that everybody's got information on. It was all reported. We're not here to litigate that. We're just here to get information for the planning board and the Surfside Club. So your name and address, please.
Lamar Barber, I go by Barber. Nine oh eight South.
Go ahead.
Nine oh eight South Twenty-Fifth Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I am the, thank you for referring to me as the young man, but, you know, the young man that was, that she, Terry is speaking of. So rarely do you, can you stand behind a football team without fully supporting its quarterback? And so I'm using that metaphor in reference to Michael Walker. He has plans that he presented to you guys to enhance his property, but he did not speak on his own character, all right? And so his disposition, as I felt, is precarious, unstable. His neighbors, after they read about the article in the Omaha Herald, came to me, I have a residency, I should say, I have a residency at Neil Woods, I'm an artist. And so they came to Neil Woods to speak to me and say like, hey, I'm sorry about what happened. He actually, like, you know, yelled at them too. He didn't shoot at them, but he yelled at them too for walking on, walking, walking near the water. I'm bringing this to your attention because I don't think a person with this type of disposition, poor disposition, should have influence on the culture of Omaha, Nebraska. Yes, I was there skipping rocks. This person asked me to leave his property. When I didn't move fast enough, he jumped out of his truck, put his hands on me. After that, he grabbed a gun and shot at me. I even felt the rocks hit my leg. We were near the water. He could have shot up in the air, he could have shot in the water, but he chose to, to attempt to intimidate me. None of it worked. But I'm bringing all that to your attention because this person is asking for further permission to have further influence on the great city of Omaha. I'm not from here. I'm from Detroit. I'm a visiting artist. And so the people have been nothing but kind to me for the most part. So I just want to reveal what type of person is asking for permission to the planning board, if you have any further questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other opponents? Do you folks want to, are you going to leave, or are you going to? Okay, all right. Are there any opponents, other opponents that wish to speak? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name's Marissa Whitehall. I'm executive director at Fontanel Forest. We own six hundred acres of floodplain, twenty-one hundred acres of land in Washington, Douglas and Sarpy County, and the Neil Woods Nature Center, which is located at one four three two three Edith Avenue, Edith Marie Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one two two, six eight one one two. Thank you. Okay, great. So I'm here to speak to what I feel is a very sensitive issue related to the sensitivity and the fragility of the ecosystem that Mr. Walker's project is scheduled to take place in, or he's hoping to take place in. The environmental overlay district is really focused on protecting public health, public safety, as well as general public welfare. That was the intent of the environmental overlay district. This project is slated to take place in Floodway as well as a Flood Fringe. These are very sensitive environmental ecosystems. It's an area that was intended for low use. It's an area that's intended for low impact. What's being proposed in this project is a RV park that has one hundred spaces on thirty acres. The Ponca Hills Special Development Area requires that only one unit be built on five acres, so it's very different than the character of the area that it is being proposed in. There are concerns also about the development in the Floodway and the Flood Zone. With one hundred RV vehicles, there will be motor vehicle fluid oil running off into a sensitive area, potentially into the Missouri River. With individuals that are occupying and camping in this area, there is very likely to be debris and garbage that will eventually make its way into the Missouri River. If any of you have walked along the Missouri River in the downtown development area, especially after this flood, you see the tremendous amount of human waste and garbage that is floating down the Missouri River and impacting those ecosystems. So that is a consideration. It is also going to create a significant increase in traffic. And there are major concerns by neighbors as the executive director at Fontanel Forest and the owner of Neil Woods Nature Center. I was contacted by many neighbors in the area, and they expressed concerns about traffic. There are many blind drives. It's a very narrow street. If you have to, if there's passing traffic, sometimes neighbors have to pull off to the side. And with the sensitive less soil and large RV vehicles, there's likely increased degradation to, degradation, excuse me, to that roadway. And additional safety, there have been traffic incidences that caused severe injury to individuals on this road, and so neighbors are very concerned about increased public safety and traffic hazards being caused by this increased usage of the road. Other community concerns, as I mentioned, I have received many phone calls. I received packages in the mail unsolicited from neighbors that were really interested in making sure that Fontanel Forest was aware of this issue, as it does also impact what we feel is important value to our organization, which is protection of the really important environmental ecosystems along the Missouri River. I'm not aware that there have been any community member, community meetings. There don't see, there hasn't been any expression by any of the community members that have reached out to me that they've been engaged in providing input into how this project is developed, or whether or not it's appropriate for the area. And so if there is approval for this project, it should come with full community support. You are also aware that NP Dodge Park, very near to this area, provides public camping and RVs and that sort of thing. From the community's perspective and from my perspective, it doesn't require, we don't really require in this particular area, additional public camping. It would not necessarily enhance the community, and it would create a threat to both people, plants, and animals. A distinction between park, the RV park and camping that would happen at NP Dodge Park and potentially on the RV park that is developed by Mr. Walker would be the availability and access to consumption of alcohol at the parking, at the camping area, which, again, will make it very difficult to manage and also create a burden to the neighbors in, as it relates to the character of their community and people that are wandering in. There are some thoughts about, you know, fencing and those kinds of things, but it's not necessarily going to keep intoxicated people from basically trespassing on neighbors' land. There are already, in the community, it's been expressed to me, there are already concerns about the level of noise and the activities that happen at Surfside Club. I know that we're not discussing that, but there are already concerns about the Surfside Club. So increasing, increasing that with one hundred RV campers will just increase that problem. And let's see. That's, that's the total of my comments.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Good comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Yeah, I'll call you up. No, that's all right. I can call you up right now if you want to come up and address some of the issues.
Yeah, we, I got a little list here, and I would appreciate having the chance to address. And is it, is it Whitehall?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. I have, I have a letter from, from Ms. Whitehall regarding, oh, there's, I turned it off, didn't I? Regarding.
Just wait, it's coming.
Yeah, it just needs to be, I'm never, but I can address a few things while that lights up. As far as my reputation, where I come from, I worked for the railroad. I started on the railroad when I was eighteen years old. In nineteen ninety-one, I started buying rental property, fixing up properties and flipping properties, and I bought a lounge in Omaha called Kelso's Lounge, and I changed the name to Boondockers Lounge. I had that, that lounge for, till nineteen ninety-eight. I kept the land and building for another twenty-five years, just sold it recently. And I've owned two different other, I owned a stable restaurant in Ashland, a full steakhouse keno parlor. We've owned Subway Sandwich Store on Ninetieth and Maple Street. We have owned Three's Lounge on Thirtieth and, right, right down on Thirtieth Street by the Mormon Bridge. And I've been buying and selling real estate. I've become a real estate agent. I'm a pilot, commercial pilot, commercial rated. I, I've been studying and working and achieving things for, oh, I'm sixty years old now. But my concern is always for the best interest for the, for what situation is at hand. I don't just get up in the morning and say, this is the day. Been carrying a firearm for thirty years. In the business I'm in, you're out late at night, usually if you're ha, if you're lucky, you got some money with you, so you protect yourself. Never, ever have I drawn my firearm, much less fired around. That situation, I hope, never happens again. And Mr. Barber, I would like to, I didn't know you were here. And Mr. Barber, I would like to, I didn't know you were here, but I would like to extend the opportunity to maybe meet with you and discuss that situation and try to put it behind us, because I didn't like it any more than he did. But the life-threatening portion of it, and the assault, and what he was saying, I had no other choice but to protect myself. So with that being said, I'll leave that, I'll leave that alone, because that is not part of this, but I thought I deserved a chance to, to say my side of the story, what I'm willing to share with you. So a little bit of that. We've been running the Surfside now, again, since 2013. We have, we have addressed the problem with sound. We operate on a DB meter. Our DB meter runs at 92, 60 feet from the stage at all times. We, we don't want to intrude on our neighbors, especially when it comes to sound and noise. There, most of the time, our entertainment starts at 5:00, and they're over at 9:00. On Friday and Saturday, it's a little later, so we start at 6:00 and they're over at 10:00. Once in a great while, we have one or two events a year where it might go over, 11:00, 11:30. I will address that if it's an issue, but we do physically watch what we're doing with sound at all times, and we do care about what our neighbors think about it. I just wrote some notes, and I, it's not light. Traffic, that's what I wanted to point out here. It says in your letter that you enjoy 120,000 customers a year and 60,000 students visit your facility every year.
That's in Bellevue.
That's in Bellevue?
Yes.
Well, how many come out to this facility?
Just a, just a second.
Well, I just wanted to point out traffic.
Just to address your case.
I'm sorry, you're right, yeah, absolutely. I will address the board, thank you for pointing that out. So anyway, I'm wrong, I guess I'm wrong, that's in other areas. But they do still enjoy their traffic count, and they enjoy their customers coming to their facility. All we're asking for is a chance to enjoy our customers coming to our facility. As far as people driving off the roads, I drive that road all the time. I'm on it five, eight, 10, 12 times a day. And I've never seen traffic so heavy that people were pulling over to the side of the road to, unless it's a tractor going down the road that had a slow-moving-vehicle sign on it. Yes, we do enjoy a very healthy business. I'm not going to say we don't. And we do what we can for dust control from our gravel road that goes from the hill down. We water that as often as we can, as much as we have to, and then we put asphalt grindings on it this year. So we do what we can to mitigate dust and to ease the flow of traffic. We have people guiding traffic up at the road so that, that we don't have mishaps and incidents. We have had an accident up there on the road, and actually a motorcycle hit the side of my truck. And, but what everybody fails to tell you is the motorcycle was doing 70 miles an hour, it was 20 years old, had no tread on the tires, and the kid was, 31-year-old kid, but he was high on, he was, he had showed for THC and also, so, I'm talking about traffic.
Just a second, Michael, I'll tell you what, I'm going to give you just a couple more minutes, and if you want to address the points that have been brought up that you think are the most important, but I'm just going to give you a couple more minutes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Because we're wondering all over the place here.
We are. Well, you can probably, I'd just like to say, you can see where the first meeting has gone. And, and I think, I think I'm with you. I would like to just simply address the issues, go through my application process, just like everybody else, get treated just like everybody else. I can take yes, I can take no. But I, but I don't think that interrupting the application process with some of this, some of the other stuff is, is something that I care to, you know, really listen to. So with that, I will have way more to offer at the next meeting. Apologize for being on edge with it, but I don't take being called a racist very lightly because I just haven't got where I have been.
Well, never mind.
You know, so, I just haven't got where I have been.
Thank you.
Feel like Joe Biden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board? Nope. Eric?
All right. So here as a planning department representative and representing the city as a whole, you know, our job is to look at a development proposal and compare that to the applicable regulations, whether that's the zoning code, the subdivision code, or any other code within our municipal code. There's a lot there. I'm not here to talk about anybody's character on either side. We do have strong concerns, though, about the completeness or the quality of the application that we received. There is a history of, of noncompliance or not receiving permits on this site, and we have a long ways to go before we are anywhere close to any support for any potential development or enhancements of this site. So we're recommending layover for many reasons, and just to touch on some of those, you know, we have incomplete site plan that does not show all parking areas, and there's two different areas. We have the proposed enhancements or improvements to the Surfside on the north side, the commercial zoning, and then we also have the proposed RV portion on the south side. All of this being, most of the property being in the floodplain, whether that's flood fringe or floodway, and then we also have a large portion that's in the North Hills Environmental Overlay. So there are a lot of different code sections, a lot of different areas of compliance that need to be considered. I know the site has been there a long time, so there's, you know, certain uses and allowances that it, you know, has continued, and in fact, it has commercial zoning on the restaurant portion. But we need to look at the entire site in its totality. So a complete site plan, what the existing improvements are versus what the proposed improvements are, or what they will be. There's been extensive loss of tree canopy on portions of this site. Now, whether that is from past flooding events or human interaction, that's a discussion that we need to have and to account for that tree loss. One of the key items, if we're talking about development in the floodway and flood fringe, floodway especially, is campground is one of the few uses that are allowed, that is allowed in a floodway. So we need to consider, you know, any potential life safety or evacuation plan. So these are all part of the conversations that we need to sit down with the applicant and have. So for that, we are recommending layover of both the plat and the special use permits.
Okay, for agenda item number 15, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
For agenda item number 25, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number 21, KC 10-19-131. Applicant is Ted Grace. This was on for approval. It was removed. Request approval of a rezoning from MU to GI, property is located within a flood fringe overlay district, location 3735 South 149th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Kyle Hossi with ENA Consulting Group, representing the applicant Ted Grace. The property in question is Lot 9 and Lot 10 in the Altec Business Development. Currently, Lot 9, which is shown here, and this is Lot 10. Lot 10 is part of the overall mixed-use development, and Lot 9 is outside of that, and is currently zoned GI. In the development of these two, development of Lot 9, we're looking to do a combined lots sign, Lot 10, together to make one lot. Since we are not allowed to have two different zonings over one lot, we are asking for approval to take Lot 10 out of the mixed-use agreement and go to the GI zoning to match what is currently with Lot 9. And I'll make myself available for any questions. It would be a spec building. Yeah.
Okay, any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Name and address, please.
Hi, Jackie Donovan, I'm with Robert Miller Properties and Donovan Properties. Do you mind keeping this lit, and I can show you where I'm located? 3850 South 149th Street. There we go. So we own these four buildings right here, and this building right down the street. I guess.
Which, I'm sorry, Jackie, which, I'm, down the street, which building?
These four buildings, that would be, this is the two, the two lots, so we're directly across the street, and it would be to the south and a little bit west.
Okay.
And then we also own another building just down the street.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And I've also spoken to the neighbor that's next door. We bought this land in 2000 from Doug McDermott, who was the original sod guy that owned this whole area. And ours was also zone GI, and when we came before the city with our plans to build, they asked that we change the zoning to mixed-use, and we were agreeable to that. And so, I mean, the only thing that was GI originally, as I understand it, was this line in that one lot. So I guess I have a lot of concerns. If you look here, and I'm going to show you another picture, this is from Google Earth, and this is all buildings. There isn't any outdoor storage. People, it's not a GI area. Everybody has built mixed-use, the rest of the lots are all mixed-use. We don't have any outdoor storage, whether it's screened or not screened. So I have a lot of concern. If, my understanding, and I want Ted to, I mean, I'm all for building in this area, don't get me wrong, but if we're going to do a flex building, which is what I think he's asking for, I think that can certainly be built under the mixed-use zoning. And my biggest concern is if you go on the other side of the creek, this is the GI that's a part of this park, just on the other side of the creek, and you can see what starts happening when you have all this outdoor, and I've got copies of these, if you'd like me to bring them up and have it be a part of the file. So I'm, I'm very concerned about outdoor storage, whether it's screened or not, and I feel like we have a really lovely business park, and a lot of people have put a lot into it, and to, to switch the zoning from mixed-use to GI, to go, to lower it rather than bring the other one up to mixed-use, I just, I have some concerns, and certainly, I also, I called Ted and was not able to speak with him, I guess he was at Gawn, and really, the only one that's called us back is the attorney. I did speak, or we talked on the phone for a minute or two. So I'm all for building this. I just want to make sure, there's, you know, we have a lot in this area, and so do a lot of other people, and I just want to make sure it's commensurate with all the other lots in, in the business park.
Jackie, you referred to outdoors, outdoor storage a lot of times. Are you aware of something? I mean, this is, it sounds like it's going to be spec.
It is, but I mean, I, when I asked for some of the uses, it specifically said, hey, we'll only allow screened outdoor storage. And I don't, you know, I mean, if you look at this, it's all these beautiful buildings. I don't want to have some fences that happen to have some metal slats in it to, you know, to hide some, whether it's building materials or anything else. Every, we have some builders and everything in our, and everything's inside. I would be totally amicable, especially if everything were inside storage. I want them to build it. I guess I really would have appreciated been contacted and just saying, hey, this is kind of what we're thinking, this is what the building's going to look like, and I'm probably going to be totally game. I just, I feel like when, when we asked to go to downgrade on the zoning, I was a little bit shocked and just wanted to make sure that my concerns were heard.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay. So I mean, and I, I guess the other thing I really wanted to ask for was just a layover so I could meet with Ted, and then maybe we come in here and everybody's in agreement. So either one, I would really appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Did you have any additional? I can call you up if you have anything additional.
I guess I can add.
Yeah, if you, if you want to add to it, or, or if you.
This is the, the current proposed layout for that building, for that site. We don't have a specific.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Kyle Hossi, ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska. This is the current proposed site plan that we have for the site with the flex building. We do not have, I believe Ted has a current proposed user for the site yet. And then to address some of the outdoor storage concerns that Jackie has, and I had, there was two different submittals on this site of the Altec Business Park, the one that's laid over that was following this on the agenda. When I talked to Jackie, we discussed some of the uses that were proposed for this site and for Lots 12, and she wanted some of the definitions for some of the uses that could be within that mixed-use agreement or on this lot. I center the city definitions of, I think Light Industry is the one that has that enclosed, when it has the definition that the city has within the municipal code, Light Industry says enclosed or screened storage is allowed. So that is not what's proposed on this, proposed on this site, it's the site plan, but there is no plan for any outdoor storage for Lots 9 and 10.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board?
Just a question with regards to zoning change. What is permissible for stor, what is storage considered as, in terms of zoning requirement?
Well, the industrial, general industrial zoning would allow outdoor storage. Now, I'm not talking the outdoor storage use type, I'm talking a business could store materials, fenced-in materials, outside. Now, there's, there are certain screening requirements, you know, if it was adjacent to the mixed-use, it might be, you know, it might be limited to the backside. You know, but, but yes, general industrial does allow storage. I mean, you, you even get to the, I mean, general and heavy industrial zoning districts, I mean, you can have some very heavy intensive districts. Now, that's not what is proposed here, but when you do have a rezoning to GI, there is that possibility.
And flex space, I mean, looking at the drawings, there looked like it was going to be all-enclosed type of units in there, but flex space?
Yeah, so, so a lot of the, the flex space, a lot of the construction trade companies, your, your electrician, your plumber, your drywall guy, you know, those are common tenants of flex spaces. A lot of times, those fit under the custom manufacturing use type.
And zoning for that is GI as well?
It's allowed in, and not just general industrial, there's some commercial districts with a special use permit. It could be added into a mixed-use plan. So the other site that Kyle had mentioned that was on layover for the major amendment to the mixed-use is just, just a short distance to the east. Now, it would be an option to, you know, to incorporate, we'd have to look at, you know, part of the challenge is, half the site is GI zoning, half of it is mixed-use, you know, and so what's, what are the options available to us? I don't know the mixed-use acres, I don't know if we'd be amenable to rezoning the GI portion to mixed-use and to incorporate all of this and the other major amendment. That's a possibility, but I, I can't commit to that at this time. I mean, this Altec Business Park, there's been a lot of changes and evolving pieces as you go back in our case history. Even, even if you look at the zoning history in your recommendation report, there's, there's different rezonings all over the place, there's major amendments, even the mixed-use agreements are rather, you know, some of it, it's not the best documentation that we have. So it's, you know, we could definitely sit down with the applicant to see if that's a possibility, if they would want to include it in the, in the overall mixed-use. The future land use map does designate this property as industrial, though, and so that's one of the key items that we look at with the rezoning. Now, perhaps whenever it was zoned to mixed-use, perhaps that future land use map shouldn't have reflected industrial zoning anymore, but I, you know, I can't account for that history or when that happened or what occurred. But, I, you know, I can't account for that history or when that happened or what occurred. So, we view it as compliant with the master plan and we're acceptable to the rezoning. You know, that being said, if, if you want, you know, the, the applicant and, and Jackie to meet, it's always a possibility as well.
Well, I assume you're going to try and communicate no matter what, anyway, and that would be advisable, so.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions, comments?
I guess I'm, I'm just curious.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I'm just curious, what's the motivation to go to GI instead of staying with, with mixed-use? What's, what's the rationale? Is it the second story, is that it?
That's the...
That's the other, that's the other building.
I know.
Is this, is this because the city's requiring it or the applicant requests?
Well, a site can't, can't consist of two zoning districts.
Okay.
So the building they're proposing is currently on two zoning districts.
But it doesn't need to be GI for the use that they're proposing, it sounds like.
Well, any mixed-use agreement can incorporate separate uses in there. The mixed-use zoning section has a list of uses that is usually permitted or, or with a special use permit process or major amendment. I can't remember offhand. I believe custom manufacturing is under that section of possible special use permits. But, um, specifically in this Altec Business Agreement, those uses are not in there. And so for the other case on 22, they're adding some of those uses in. But what I also, I, what I can't, I'm sorry, I can't commit at this time to, are we okay with expanding that mixed-use zoning? That's something we'd have to look at, just, I mean, there's certain acreage requirements or maximums.
Any additional questions? Comments? Nope. You gave your recommendation. Do we have a motion? I'll look for approval. Do we have a second? No, no second? I guess we need an, an another motion then.
I move for layover.
We have a motion for layover? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for layover. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion to layover is approved.
Okay. That's the last case, isn't it? Were you folks here for a case?
Uh, no, we basically here for a request of a special use permit for a daycare center. We are case number 26.
That was on, uh, that was on the consent agenda and that was laid over way at the beginning of... It's laid over till the next meeting, 30 days, or it could be further? Longer, I meant.
So, so, Greg, so you were laid over, Dave Fanzl, Planning Director, you were laid over because we need more information from you. So, you need to get with staff and, and, and read, well, read the report, I assume you have. But there are some concerns about the information that was provided to us, so you'll need to schedule a meeting with staff. And once we receive that information, um, we can put it back on an agenda. I can't commit to the next agenda, uh, because we're on a timeline. And layover cases, unless we get them, the information in, in the proper timeframe, we can't guarantee you can be on the next agenda. So your first step is to get ahold of staff. Mike or Robert can give you their card and we can have that conversation with you.
Real quick question, based on what you've seen, uh, this is a real estate type of thing, she's willing to buy it, which is the, um, her, Sandra, it's like, uh, like, uh... So basically, it's continued upon approval to go with purchase. Would you recommend to go with purchase? I mean, did you see a 90% chance to get through?
I can't, we can't. We can't give you a percentage, it's a decision you have to make or they have to make on their own.
Yep.
We can't, can't give you any type of percentage today.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. Say what?
I would just, we have one more case to deal with, right?
No. No. We're done.
Oh, that's withdrawn, that's right.
Withdrawn. Okay, we have minutes from last month. We have the pre-meeting minutes. Do we have a motion on the pre-meeting minutes? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion on the minutes from last month's meeting, uh, meeting, public meeting?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? You got a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved to adjourn at 4:25.